We all have personal friends, we do have support. But I kept thinking, who are you really addressing yourself to? So I thought about who elected you. Well, obviously you think that you were elected by taxpayers. Conservative taxpayers are only concerned about reducing property taxes. But probably not by taxpayers who care about education. Folks that really are concerned about children. So Ms. Johnson, let me suggest to you that students may not be taxpayers, but you represent the community. You don't represent taxpayers. So if a student has an interest, you need to consider that as much as you would anybody. Whether they pay taxes or whether they don't. When I was a judge and I was sworn in, they told me, you know, defend the Constitution, defend the Constitution of Illinois. They never said to me, don't pay attention to juveniles because they're not taxpayers. Don't pay attention or give more attention to rich people because they pay more taxes. They didn't say anything like that. They said, you represent bond in Madison County. And that's what the four of you represent. So stop thinking about taxpayers. Think about the community. Last thing I will want to mention quickly. So I noticed that you are now doing what you need to do. Meet with administrators before the board meeting. But apparently you're not listening. Because when you come here, you called the administrator up and you ask him a question that's pretty clear from their answer, they had already discussed with you at autumn or at later for quite some time. And yet you still ask the same question. If you want to know about the atmospheric condition, then they'll spend the time and tell you all about it. But don't come to the next board meeting and say, by the way, why is the sky blue? So my resolution for you guys, that I hope you'll take to heart, is to listen and don't just hear.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there are no further public comments, we'll move on to the omnibus agenda. The following items will be approved in one motion unless any board member wishes to have an item pulled prior to the vote.
M was the mother.
Okay, request to pull M, you say? Any other?
Item B, or C, excuse me, C.
C on bills? If no further items pulled, is there a motion to approve? All of the items except C and M. Motion been made, a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Call for the vote.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
McCain? Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Okay, item C was pulled.
Yes, page thirty. We have a bill from Forensics Audit and Accounting. Have a problem with this bill. First of all, I don't think we ever should have passed this contract. This contract, if you read it, states that this person had no financial interest, personal property, and no personal interest. And it's unbiased. And it goes on several times, talking about not being a biased person. And obviously, we know that this was a supporter. Some people got elected on this board. And I don't think, if there was all these different accounting companies that we could have hired, we hired this one without any competitive bid. And also, I'd like to have an update, because this was in November. Where are we at on that audit? As far as? It's, we've got eighteen hour bill here.
We need to have a motion first.
Okay. Sorry. Motion first to discuss item C. Okay.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second? Motion has been made and seconded, okay.
Sorry.
Further discussion?
Anyway, I have a problem. I just wanted an update of where we're at on this audit. We've got eighteen hours. Thank you. And we have not seen any information, nor could I get any information on this, where we're at.
I'm not aware of any information or any reports that have been submitted to the board or to Lori, have you received any?
No, I don't have any information other than the bills. I know Mary has been working as the point of contact for the college. Mary, do you have an update?
Sure. At this point, we have maintenance out in our storage shed looking for FY15 documents that they're unable to locate.
For fiscal year fifteen?
Correct.
Okay, this contract is for travel expenses fiscal year nineteen.
I understand.
So we're paying people to go out and look for years that we're not covering this audit? And we're going to pay somebody to audit that's not covered on this contract?
Correct.
And this is a no bid per hour contract? I have a problem with that. And I think anybody that's associated with personally should not be voting to pay the friends' bill.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a not to exceed five thousand dollars. And I don't, I'm not a forensic auditor, never have been, I was an auditor. But you often have to go into areas that may not have been, you really didn't think they were going to be a scope, within the scope of your audit. But as you dig into things, you find that you do need to see those. So that's about all I know about it.
I would agree with you, Kevin, on that, except that this request for information was made upfront for fiscal year fifteen, fiscal year sixteen, fiscal year seventeen, fiscal year eighteen, fiscal year nineteen, and fiscal year twenty to date before any information was reviewed.
They asked for that before they even looked at anything?
Yes, and we complied.
Right, but this is for fiscal year nineteen, is what this contract is for.
That is what the document says, yes.
Period.
We complied to be cooperative.
So he's exceeding, overdoing his contract on hourly rate, cost to the taxpayers, and the college money to go look for these records. Thank you.
I will add also, as far as the next step, is that Jeremy Plank is coming out on Thursday afternoon to interview a few individuals in the finance office.
Any other comments? Motion to? It's been made and seconded to? Just to look at it. Roll call on to? Approve all the bills.
The motion is to approve the bills.
Okay. So, roll call.
Okay. Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson? McCain? Wertz?
No.
Hyon?
Yes.
Item M, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Second? Motion been made and seconded to approve personnel. Any discussion?
I just have a question, probably a minor technical question, I suppose. But I was, I noticed that we are, and maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but we're employing a part-time person by the name of Mary L. Watson, is that right? And is that the same Mary L. Watson who's a full-time employee?
Yes, she is going to be teaching the Blackboard course that's within her realm. She was the one who spoke at the meeting last month on Blackboard. She's the Blackboard course technician.
So, can you explain to me how, why is she being hired as a part-time employee when she's already a full-time?
I would assume that she's teaching a course on Blackboard.
So?
As an adjunct.
Anybody who's listed in that section, those are part-time overload. Sometimes they could be full-time faculty, sometimes they could be part-time adjuncts. These are people who are teaching credit courses for the college on an adjunct basis. So in Mary Lou's position, she's a full-time employee, but we also are paying her to teach a course in addition to her full-time position.
Right, so she would be an adjunct, an adjunct professor, okay.
Yeah, yes.
I figure something like that.
Any other discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson? McCain? Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Informational items?
All the informational items are as they are presented in the board book. If there's any questions related to items in through our, I do just want to draw attention to the fact that this is in-service week, so our faculty are back on campus. And this is a week that's very busy for all of them as they are involved in a lot of committee meetings. And today, we had our full in-service for all faculty, where we get everyone together for the training. There's a number of different training opportunities that they'll take part in all week. In addition to that, I just want to acknowledge that 2020 marks the college's 50th anniversary. And so we're really focusing on, on a celebration that's going to be taking place really over the next eighteen months. We see calendar year 2020 obviously marks our 50th calendar year, but our fall class that starts our academic year for 2021. So we'll, we'll be focusing on our, on celebrating our five decades of success as an institution over these next eighteen months. We put together a committee and just some things that have taken place so far. There's a lapel pin at each of your seats today. We're working in media services to design a website that will feature, that'll be dedicated specifically to the history of the college. We'll have a timeline of all the significant events that have taken place over the past fifty years. And there's a committee on campus who will be working to just find ways that we can celebrate our 50th anniversary throughout the year. In addition to that, I just want to note that our foundation has chose to use this 50th anniversary as a way to do some fundraising, as an action-forcing event, if you will. And so Debbie Edelman is here this evening. She's the Director of Development for the foundation and has been so gracious to chair our 50th anniversary. And I've just asked her to share a little bit about the planning underway.
Thank you, Lori. I'm really pleased to serve the college in this capacity, you know, leading around the 50th anniversary celebration, particularly because I really enjoy fundraising and reasons to ask people to invest in our students and our campuses. So I just, Lori pretty much covered everything with regard to 50th anniversary celebrations. I would encourage you to remember this URL if you can, lc.edu/50years, where that's the website that Lori referenced that we'll be working on. And part of that website will have celebratory events listed. We've already started talking with faculty and staff who plan events every year, such as arts events or music events, et cetera. And they're all on board with branding those events as 50th anniversary events, so we can get the word out even more to our campus community and our community at large. Lori asked me to share a little bit about the Lewis and Clark Community College Foundation, which exists to fundraise from the community for the college's priorities. And I'm happy, happy to be able to do that, especially for our new trustees at last. The foundation supports the college and its primary goal is to, to help increase student access and student success. The 50th anniversary gives us a framework to work with. And the Board of Directors, which is a 23-member board, has launched a 50th anniversary capital campaign, capital and endowment campaign. And they have set a goal of raising five million dollars by spring of 2021, when our 50th anniversary celebration culminates. And they are about one and a half million dollars into that goal. I'm sure you know how capital campaigns work. There's a quiet phase, and then there's a public phase. So during the quiet phase, we've raised 1.5 million dollars. And I think that during the public celebration of our 50th anniversary, we'll be able to raise the balance of that. For some background on the foundation, over the years, charitable gifts have enabled the college to deliver, grow, and innovate. Millions of dollars have been spent on financial aid for students. That includes scholarships, emergency funds, and other types of financial aid that our students need. Millions have been spent on equipment and space for academic programs. The foundation, board members pride themselves on having raised funds that are endowed and are restricted for the support of some of our academic programs and our buildings. So Hathaway is one, Trimpie has an endowment, and, you know, Temple and Nursing Building has an endowment. The big dream is to have a million-dollar endowment for every single building on campus. So I hope you brought your checkbooks tonight. We also fund cultural experiences for the community at large. And key stakeholders, such as the foundation's board members, have leveraged millions of dollars in gifts by fostering relationships between employers in our community and the college. And that's really been the key to the foundation's success, is the fact that the, the members of the Board of Directors are business, business owners, business leaders, community leaders. And they are a peer group. And they bring their other peers in the community to the mission of the college, expose them to the mission when they come into the community or, and, and that is what has really contributed to this foundation's success. Having a 23-member board and two full-time staff, there's myself and there's a foundation assistant, her name is Alexandria, and she is usually up to her eyeballs in data, making sure that all of that information is managed properly, so that we can do better and better at fundraising every year. The foundation has assets of more than 15 million dollars as of its last audit. We operate on a fiscal year, just like the, the same as the college. So in FY19, we closed that year with about 15 million in assets. Most of those assets are permanently endowed. These endowments have donor restrictions, and interest income is spent on what the donor desired, scholarships, programs, buildings. In addition to our endowed funds, annual fundraising efforts raise another 250,000 dollars, and half of that we spend on our scholarship program as well, one we're very proud of, because it contributes directly to recruiting students and getting them to enroll and retaining students and getting them to complete. Just a quick note about our annual fund, I think that's a term probably all of you are familiar with, because you all have alma maters who ask you to contribute to their annual fund, I'm sure. The college is fortunate enough to have champions in the community who believe in us so deeply that they are members of one of the two foundations, giving societies. So I'm sure you're familiar with the concept of a giving society. It's a group of people who give at a certain level, year after year, and, and in return, they, you know, are listed as members of this society. Ours are called the President's Circle. And President's Circle members donate 5,000 dollars a year. And our other giving society is the 1838 Society. And those donors donate 1,838 dollars a year, which is an odd number, but I'm sure you can guess where it came from. That's the year Monticello Seminary for Women opened this campus. These unrestricted gifts provide us with incredible flexibility, and we use them to help the college quickly take advantage of opportunities or meet challenges. We also use them to fund scholarships and operating expenses. And everyone is invited to be a member of the President's Circle or the 1838 Society. In order to find more of these investors, we appeal to our alumni, employees, retirees, and business leaders through face-to-face visits, for the most part. It's the best day ever when a donor has a frank discussion with me about their today and tomorrow and forever intentions. That's our framework for fundraising. Today, gifts are annual gifts, year after year. Tomorrow, gifts are major gifts, five figures or more. And forever gifts are planned gifts that people leave in their estates. And sometimes, I always endeavor, when I'm having a conversation with a donor or a potential donor, to ask them about all three of those, of those things. And more often than not, they're happy to answer me. And often, it's with a yes. I will include you in my estate plans, or consider a major gift one day, or join your giving society. But to, we have to find these people, right? So to do that, we use direct mail, email, events, and social media to attract first-time donors and to retain them annually. Just because someone wants to join our 1838 Society doesn't mean that it fits within their philanthropic plans right away. So, you know, they might come onboard as, as a donor at a, you know, 500 or 250 dollar level. And we just work together, year after year, to move them up that giving ladder, again a concept I'm sure you're well familiar with, and eventually get them into our, our giving society. All of this is to say that the Lewis and Clark Community College Foundation is always operating in capital campaign mode, which typically is when people use face-to-face visits only for capital campaign modes. But we use them for every single day fundraising. And have been much more successful with this relationship-based fundraising model than we ever were with our previous model, which was based on transactions, selling tickets, selling sponsorships, selling, selling, selling all of the time, kind of one-off things. Well, if you've ever been at a fundraising banquet, you can imagine how difficult it is to have a conversation with someone about their estate plans. It's really not the time or the place to ask, most people would say. So we've, we've worked very hard to train ourselves to, to get better and better at reaching out to people, asking them for, you know, a one-on-one visit and conducting that visit, and then, most important part of sales, follow-up. Do you have any questions about the 50th anniversary or the Lewis and Clark Community College Foundation? Well then, thanks so much for letting me have your time tonight.
Thank you, Debbie. Discussion items.
The construction status report is on page 124 of your book, just a few things to note. As is the usual update, the main complex foundation improvement, we're still waiting on CDB to bid that project. There's a new project on there, that's the Haskell Hall Fan Coil Replacement Project, and CDB is working with Brick Partnership on a contract. We anticipate that'll go to a formal bid sometime, probably by the fall. And I just want to note, it's not in your book, but the Riverbend Arena Project is, is out of the book, because we are just really doing the final touches in that building. It's, it's really come together, we're just waiting on furniture at this point. The stairs were finished this week. I think wall pads were going up today, and we're finishing off the storage area. So we'll be moving everyone back into that building here, hopefully by the end of the month, as soon as our furniture arrives. So any questions on construction projects? Then with that, I would like to move on to the next discussion item, and that is Dr. Jill Lane and Dr. Dennis Krieb are here to talk a little bit about the Student Success Team and the work that they've been doing here on campus.
Thank you very much. Given the way the rooms configured, you should all have a PowerPoint handout at your places, but we're also going to be projecting it on the screen so that the audience is able to see. So after last month's board meeting, Lori and Brett asked Dennis and I to come and present to you on kind of the history and purpose of the Student Success Team, what it is, who's on it, where it came from, our successes, and kind of where we're headed in the future. So I'm going to do part of that history and background, then Dr. Dennis Krieb is going to talk to you about some, some data, and then we'll mention what we're going to do moving forward. So I think around 10 years ago, Dr. Linda Chapman and Val Harris wrote a grant. And part of that grant involved the creation of what we call an interdepartmental think tank. We've got vice presidents, deans, institutional research, representatives from the Student Success Center, a variety of people, and we meet once a month. The original focus was really about students who were not college-ready, who came to our campus and needed remedial or developmental courses, and they would be struggling. So our original projects were designed to focus on those students. But this was a really dynamic group. We took a philosophical approach to student success, and it was based on this. So we were all reading the research studies and the literature, many of us were going to conferences, looking about theories on how students best learn. So we would come back to the group, brainstorm, and either develop a new practice or apply an existing best practice. And we had a very clear methodology. I mean, IR really forced us, I think, to make sure that we really thought about, what are you trying to accomplish, how are you going to measure it, and then what are you going to do after that? And so we would develop a pilot, we would determine all those factors, we would implement the pilot with a willingness to take risks. I think that was really important. We had a mantra that said, do no harm, but sometime you have to take risks when you're trying something new with students to get them to succeed. And if it doesn't work and it's a failure, you stop. But we would study this systematically for three semesters. And we would either tweak it and study it some more, do away with it or abandon it if it wasn't effective, or we would institutionalize it and make it just the new way of doing business. We had a scorecard of these projects. One example, quick example of a project, was students who were in developmental reading and writing normally wouldn't be able to take a general psychology class. And so we'd been looking at a lot of research that says contextualizing reading and writing helps students succeed. So we put students as a cohort in a reading class, a writing class, and a gen psych class, and all those instructors communicated regularly. And the reading assignments and the writing assignments were, were contextualized around what they were learning in psychology. Our original goal was they would do better in reading and writing, which they did, but the unexpected, unintended consequence was they did better in gen psych as well. And so that's just an example of one of many projects that we did. So is this, this team began to really move and grow, we ended up expanding. And this was probably about two years in, around 2012, 2013, when we had created some tutoring centers across campus, and we began actually tracking student visits to the tutoring centers. And we were able to look at that data and tie it to retention. And for consistent years, double digits, students' rate of retention increased if they visited one of the tutoring centers. We sliced and diced it by GPA, it wasn't just the good students going there. I mean, we really examined it. So we thought, and at the same time, we were doing the HLC in 2016, Persistence and Completion Academy. It's a four-year process where you pick a research project and you collect data and you, there's a lot of reporting that goes to the HLC, and Dennis will talk about that more in a minute. But we said, why don't we look at all the places on campus where we provide supports to students, emergency loan, textbook exchange? Emergency loan, textbook exchange program, snack pantry, a variety of things? And why don't we start logging those students in and measure what the impact of getting those services have?" So we have a matrix of data that shows the impact that we've had since about 2012 on success, retention, and completion. So with that, I'll hand it over to Dennis to show you this exciting data. It really is exciting.
Hello, everyone. I've learned with data, you keep it short and you keep it sweet. So I promise we won't get into the weeds too deep. But this is great news I want to share with everybody. Dr. Lane mentioned this matrix that we've built. It's pretty remarkable in terms of how we can see how students do when they touch these points around the campus. So this is a slide that we had used in our presentation. But this is showing the retention rates of students who use different points of service on our campus. So what's interesting with this is we can start to pinpoint and target these services to at-risk students. For example, in the library, if they ask a reference question, the retention rate's higher. So in the library, we have signs saying, "If you ask a question, your grades will increase," because we know that with the data that we have. So we're sharing this back with the students. So the purpose is about retention. So what is retention, and then why is it so important? So retention, truly two main points with retention in terms of its importance. One, it's correlated to graduation rates, so that's a good thing, we like that. Secondly, retention's money. So if you can stop the leaking with retention in terms of keeping students enrolled, if you just do some quick calculations based upon average credit hours here, 1% retention in terms of saved retention is about $47,000 in terms of revenue for the college. So, least retention is also a way to save money. So it also increases graduation rates, but we think there's a fiscal component to it as well. The way it's defined, you take students for one semester, Semester A, and then you see how many of those students returned in the next following fall. And those have to be degree-seeking students, and then you take out the graduates, obviously. So that's what retention is, essentially how many come back. Good news coming up here. iPads. So what is iPads and why do we care about iPads? iPads is the U.S. Department of Education. So you can think of them as being the official scorekeeper for all the community colleges, actually all of higher ed. So they produce reports based upon these key metrics called IPADs reports. And what they do is they'll take Lewis and Clark, for example, and then they'll find a cohort of like community colleges. And in this case, they're 29 throughout the United States, or 28. So they take us, they find 28 similar community colleges throughout the United States. And you can see they're from many different places, California, Colorado. And then they will look to see how we're doing compared to our cohort. So this is a way to get a gauge of where you are nationally. So here's the data, we'll look at 10 years. So this is our full-time retention rate at Lewis and Clark. Now, Dr. Lane mentioned, we started doing the Student Success Center work around 2011, 2010, 2012. That's when it really took off. And as you can see, the blue line represents Lewis and Clark. The orange line represents our cohorts. And you can see, we've overtaken our cohorts with full-time retention. And we've held that lead all the way through 2018.
Can you tell me what they look at to consider if somebody's a cohort, just quickly?
Yeah, it's based on enrollment, for the most part, and they have to be a community college. So they're looking at community colleges roughly of our size. They have to be two-year school, obviously. And there may be some other variables, but pretty much it's just similar community colleges throughout the United States. So these are only two-year schools that we're being compared to. So, yeah, good question. So anyway, you can see for full-time retention, again, around 2011, we overtook our cohorts. And we've maintained that. We're up to 70% full-time retention, that's pretty incredible. Part-time retention, again, you can see we're the blue line, the orange line are the cohorts. And in 2013, we overtook our cohorts. And we've been beating the comparison group ever since. So again, on retention, full and part-time, we're doing very well. And again, it all happened around 2012. Graduation, so they look at graduation three ways, at two years, three years, and at four years to completion. This is our graduation rates at two years to completion. If you look at this, at 2014, it moves up to 2015, and then since that time, it's been moving up. If you think about graduation rates, it's a lagging indicator. So it's going to take a few years for those graduates to kind of filter through to see the impact of what we're doing in 2012. So this makes sense. In 2014, things start to happen at two years. Again, this is what IPADs is showing us. So we're exceeding our cohorts here on graduation rates at two years. Graduation rates at three years to completion, again, you see in 2014, it spikes. So these are students, took them three years to graduate. And again, we've exceeded our comparison cohort, we're maintaining that since 2014, 2015. And then graduation rate at four years to completion. And again, you see the same trend. In 2014, things jumped, and we've been maintaining that gap between ourselves and the comparison cohort ever since. So if you think about these metrics, these are the biggies. You've got graduation rates and you've got retention. They don't get any bigger than those two. And when you look at Lewis and Clark compared to national community colleges, we're doing very well. So, did you want to speak to this?
We can.
So again, this is tied to our accreditation. We're part of what's called the HLC Persistence and Completion Academy. It fulfills part of our accreditation requirements. We were there in 2018 in Chicago to discuss our work with Retention and Completion. They're seeing our work, and they're seeing, basically, you guys are doing very well. And then the question was brought up with enrollment, which, by the way, is something many community colleges are dealing with. So enrollment was something we pivoted to in terms of what we want to start focusing on, on enrollment efforts and initiatives. Since that time, our enrollments continue to decline. But again, that's not unique to Lewis and Clark. But we really have to focus on this, and it's going to be something that we will be expected to report about to the HLC. We're going to return to the HLC to give our findings here in March. When we do that, they're going to say, "Okay, great." But we need to see your sustainability plan to see what you're going to do moving forward with retention, completion, but also enrollment. And we'll have to think about what our plan's going to be for that.
So, you know, the Student Success Team for the past year and a half, since we were at that midpoint meeting in June of '18, Lori was there. And they said, "You're doing great with retention and completion, keep up the good work, but you need to pivot and also pull enrollment into that because you have to have people coming in the door in order to retain and have them complete." And so for a year and a half, we've been discussing it. And it's a challenging problem to tackle. And I think it requires like a real sense of innovation. And one of the many things that came up, we've talked about looking internally and externally for ways to get new ideas about how we can compete in this marketplace and perhaps reinvent ourselves. And one of the things that consistently came up was a kind of task force that's innovation-driven in terms of thinking about enrollment, who might study it and make some recommendations. And we hope to have something to take with us in March. Originally, the HLC wrap-up meeting was going to be in June, and they've moved it up to March. And so, we don't have nearly the kind of compelling data we had a year and a half ago when we presented our retention and completion data. So we're open to ideas on moving forward. Questions?
So what do you need to move forward with this task force? Like, I think that sounds like a good idea, because, I mean, the Student Success Team was successful. Obviously, with the numbers, that's pretty dramatic, the timing of all.
Right.
So, I mean, you could apply the same methodology, what affects enrollment, and how do you conquer? Try conquering them one at a time?
I think what's happened, and Dennis, you can speak to this too, is different kind of views of moving forward. I think there are some competing views. And finding a way to just be really innovative and have it owned by the entire college, I think, is kind of important. And the Student Success Team have generated a lot of ideas, but there's not the same ability to implement that had been with the retention and completion initiatives. So, Dennis?
Yeah, I would agree with that. So in IR, it's going to be about data. We have to look at this data and really get into the weeds to see what's happening with the high schools, by age. Lots of things to look at and to consider. But it's going to require a really deep look and a deep dive in the data, I think. And I think an interdepartmental approach, to get everybody's thoughts and feelings. But again, it's not unique to Lewis and Clark, so we're not the only ones. It's sort of a trend. But maybe we can figure it out, and then people can mimic what we're doing here. Because, you know, I'm hopeful we can do that.
And I just want to add too, you know, speaking of data, and what the student retention effort has done, we were able, as Dennis talked about, was this matrix. And we could really show these actionable outcomes from services that students had used on campus. So as we venture down the road with the recruiter and we start utilizing this recruit software, we now have the ability to perhaps track, you know, some of the impacts of the things that we're doing better than we have in the past. And, you know, those are the kind of, you know, measurable outcomes and things that we need in order to kind of just see what efforts are we applying and how do we measure them? Is, I think, one of those sticking points too, is, you know, how do we move forward? What's working? How do we measure it? So.
Do you see that the people who are on the Student Success Team can be the same that are on the task force? Or do you need to expand or rearrange? And do you have, is our institution set up to do that? Do you need our authority to do that? How do you come back with recommendations in February?
Part of the discussion has been just the way the Student Success Team's organized. I've chaired it for maybe four or five years. And that maybe it needs to come out of a different office, you know, president's office or something in terms of kind of having it be owned by the entire campus. The retention and completion, I mean, we would have faculty involvement, but it didn't have to be owned, I think, in that same way. So that's just one of the things that have come up in discussions.
HLC told us that this is really, it's a campus-wide issue. So, you know, everybody's got to be on board and kind of marching to the same drummer so that we're all sort of aligned. They'll tell you again, it's data-driven. You've got to really dig into the weeds, and you really just have to have an all buy-in. So it's just not one person's responsibility, it's not siloed. It's something we all have to kind of get on board with. So that's what they tell us at HLC.
There's probably also a lot of ideas already out there, right? And maybe that can be implemented for quick hits, or, you know, that you don't have to do a lot of research.
Yeah, there are. I mean, there are vendors that do this work, and, you know, they do this full-time. There's a lot to consider. But yeah, there are. I guess quickly to say, yeah, there are people that do this and could give us probably advice and really think about things we're not thinking about. Because we don't know what we don't know. I think it's part of it too. You know, we're shaking the bushes here, but we may be missing something.
For some reason, I'm thinking this presentation is talking about transfer students only, is that true? So it's all students?
No, it's career program students and transfer students. All those pilots that we've done were for both. And the completion and retention data is for both, for the campus student population as a whole.
Okay, follow-up question on that then is, do you see a difference? I'm sure you do, see a difference between the retention rates and all the statistics between transfer students and career students?
We can definitely find that. I don't know the answer to it.
Sue's waving her hand back there. Oh, okay.
Maybe Sue knows the answer to this one. I don't know. Sue, come on up and tell them what the answer. No, the wonderful thing about our technology here is we can slice these data a million ways. And I can easily tell you retention rates for applied science degree majors with transfer students. Very easy to do. I don't know the answer to your question off the top of my head. Some of our students leave early, who are transfer students. They don't complete, they may just stick around and then jump to SIUE or wherever before graduating. I don't have the answer to that in terms of which one's higher. But they aren't going to be the same, I can tell you that, for sure.
I can add that with the economy being better, some of our career students leave before finishing because they can get jobs.
Sure.
And so, a lot of them jump out before they finish, which is disappointing because they can eventually make way more money. But that lure of $15 an hour, $18 an hour versus sitting in a classroom, that's hard to beat.
I will add to that, that we've done many things to make our transfer students feel like they have kind of a home or a place. I mean, if you're a welding student, you have Travis Jumper for a bunch of classes, you're in the welding building all the time. You get to know all your fellow welding students. Nursing program builds the same camaraderie. Vincent Tinto, a man who's written a lot about retention in higher ed, says if you have that social component, you're much more likely to retain. So we have a student services hub on the fourth floor of Caldwell-Baldwin, where a lot of services are there and a lot of transfer program students there. It's a little more challenging because they are taking English and psychology over in the main complex and math and science over here, and they may have all different students in all their different classes, and they may never have the same teacher twice. So it's a little harder, especially with a commuter campus, people driving, to give them that sense of community that really shows that they're retained at a higher rate.
Agreed, yeah.
So I don't know what we need to do next, but I don't know if we could just have Brett, you know, figure this out.
Good luck.
Because I'd rather not wait, you know? If there's something we can do here in the next three months or whatever, and especially for your presentation in March.
Perhaps one of the suggestions that's come up is this task force. Since I operate out of the president's office already in projects are what I do, it might make contextual sense to just make this another project, if I could make a suggestion. This is just it, this is the thing. And then we can probably sit down and start defining the task a little bit more. I think one of the things that Dennis has said to me that strikes a chord is we don't know what we don't know. Well, the first step is to define the task. Let's figure out what we're doing and what exactly we're trying to nail down and what directions we can go. And that'll help us, I think, identify some of these easy wins, quick wins, that we can get to, to implement and go from there. Does that make sense?
So what's the next step?
Roll up our sleeves and get started. I think, yeah, honestly, I think we need to kind of assess where we are with what the efforts that are going on.
Timeline?
We can get a timeline, we can put a, yeah, we can put a project plan together and get this rolling.
So my report next February?
Yeah, we could have something on paper by February.
It doesn't have to be, you know?
Yeah, it may not be fully developed, but yeah.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
Okay, I think that's the end. I just want to end by saying, really, the credit goes to the faculty and to the tutors and the frontline support staff for those data. We just talk about these things, but they're out there on the front lines doing the hard work. So I just want to recognize them for all the great data, really.
Next up is Kent Shuffle to talk about the Mental Health Early Action on Campus Act.
This is just an information item at this point, but wanted to make you aware of it. This is a new act that's been implemented by the state that goes into effect July 1st. And while there's not having a financial impact on the college at this point, the potential is there to have a very significant financial impact. When you look through the list of items that the state's going to be enacting on July 1, one of the things they're looking at is a ratio of one clinical counselor to every 1,250 students. About a month or two ago, Emily Bothfeld from Robin Schwartz did a presentation for the student service officers around the state and said, "One of the big challenges right now is the state hasn't defined how they're determining enrollment and whether they're counting dual-credit students, online students, non-credit students. So we don't know what number we're working with from an enrollment standpoint. And that is a factor in how far we have to go to meet that ratio." We're hoping that we can use our Title IX number, which we use for federal purposes. As it says in the paperwork, that number is 3,154. If we have to use our fall credit enrollment, that number is 6,413. So there's a big difference there in what number we might have to use, which is also going to have a big impact financially. So the state did send out a survey related to this act, just asking- state did send out a survey related to this act, just asking the colleges how close they are to meeting all of the requirements and what costs would be involved to get into compliance with all of the requirements. So we used that fall enrollment number to be safe and when we looked at all of the different requirements they're asking, where we stand today for fiscal year '21, it was $126,000 for us to meet everything based on that higher enrollment number. Now hopefully, we won't have to go with that higher enrollment number. Hopefully, we can go with the lower one, but did want to make you aware that this is hanging out there and potentially could be a big expense for us as a result of the act. So this is one of the unfunded mandates that you hear about every so often. So it's going to be a challenge as we go forward, but we'll keep an eye on it and hopefully be able to stay with that lower number. You look like you were going to add to that.
I think I read somewhere that the total cost of implementing this across all colleges in Illinois, you mentioned an unfunded mandate, was between 18 to 19.3 million dollars additional cost to higher education to implement this act, which has a lot of benefits to it, but it also has a cost.
Yeah, you could make many, many arguments that there are good aspects to this act, but it does come at a price. And when I say 126,000 potentially for us, the universities are also under the same act and for them, it's going to be a much higher number.
And I just want to add to that too. Part of that act prohibits colleges or universities from instituting any sort of new fee that would offset that cost. So they made it very clear that the expectation is that we would, you know, we would be compliant. And Kent, I was just going to ask, is there a time period? I was thinking there was some sort of period of time we had to be compliant.
It kicks in July 1. We don't have to meet everything July 1 and different aspects of the act kick in at different times. So it's not all at once. We, on that ratio right now, we have two clinical counselors on campus. So quite a few, we're very close to meeting the number. We're hoping that we can achieve that ratio through contracts with local service providers such as Chestnut or the Veterans Administration, some of the health foundations. We're hoping we can work with them to be able to get in compliance with that ratio, whatever enrollment number we need to use. But potentially, that may not be able to be done because they may not be able to handle the volume, so.
Does the state specify the qualifications of these counselors?
Yes. They have to be a licensed clinical counselor.
Okay.
So just, at this point, just wanted to make you aware of it, just so you don't get blindsided or caught off guard by anything, so. Any other questions?
Kent, I think you had another item that maybe is better news than this one.
The next item is much better news. We are nearing the completion of our intercession, which is the four-week session that runs during the holiday break. It began December 23rd and ends on the 17th. This is the fourth year that we've offered intercession. It's a four-week session that uses four weeks to teach a 16-week course. So the courses that are offered in intercession are condensed down to one-fourth of the time. They're offered completely online, so students are taking the course somewhat at their own pace, but they have to complete in four weeks. It's a very tight timeframe. But with that said, it's the fourth year we've done it and this is by far the best year from an enrollment standpoint and credit hours standpoint. We have 154 students taking part. Some of those have enrolled in more than one course, so we have a total of 185 enrollments and they're taking 555 credit hours. So it was nice to see the numbers go up for the intercession. That's a good sign for us, so pleased to have that taking place.
What's a typical class taught in intercession? Like what types of classes? These aren't high school students, right?
Oh, no, these are all college students.
Transfer or?
Yes, most of them are transfer students, most of them are native students, but we also have some university students that sign up that are trying to get a gen ed requirement out of the way. That's one of the nice things about it is it does pull in students from other campuses as well. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. The next discussion item is the athletic expenses by sport and that was provided to you by Dr. Sean Hiltz on page 129. And I think he had just a few comments and would answer any questions that the board has.
Yeah, I just want to clarify what I tried to do. So I was asked a few months ago to provide expenses by sport. So what I tried to break down as clear as possible are salaries and stipends. So that would be the amount that I paid to coaches and assistant coaches. There's various things that for each team in terms of equipment and uniforms, travel expenses in terms of bus costs, transportation costs. There's a lot of game and practice expenses, which has to do with paying officials, paying scorekeepers. There's recruiting costs, scholarship costs. There are a few teams that give stipends to some players for meals and then there's housing scholarships. And so this lays out the cost for those particular sports as best as I knew it. And then to also be clear, and I said this in the email to Mr. Russ, that this is not account for all athletic expenses. There's some expenses that are just departmental expenses that wouldn't necessarily be sport-specific, you know, like the trainer needs equipment, bandages, the administrative assistant, you know, those kinds of things are not per sport. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
So I'm assuming the three where we provide housing scholarships, those are our Division One sports?
Correct.
So women's soccer, men's soccer, and men's basketball, right?
Hmm.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that right.
Any other questions? Everybody just wanted to report, see what was going on.
Okay.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Next up is Dr. Sue Siewinski to talk about the Automotive Technology Program and Subaru University.
I get to talk about something fun. So our automotive program now gets to give another credential to our graduates. We became connected to Subaru through talking to some of their representatives at a meeting and now we are part of the Subaru University. That gives our students software, access to software, free access to software. And it's going to be implemented throughout their coursework so that when they finish with a certificate or with their AAS degree, they will have Subaru credentials. Those Subaru credentials will allow them to work at a dealership under and do warranty work, which is kind of a big deal for technicians. We have something just like this with Ford. So now when our students finish, they have both, will have both Subaru credentials along with Ford credentials. It also opens us up to donations from Subaru's. So cars, hardware, software, examples, things like that, which is really great. And Ford's been really great with us as well.
What's ASE stand for?
Automotive Service, I think it's Education. I should know that. My husband's a technician and an ASE. But ASE also has all these levels of credentials within it and our students leave with two credentials in ASE. And so you can get up to master level ASE and things like that.
That's a summer conference that we go to every year?
Yeah. So, so, sorry. Our faculty members have to do so much continuing education to keep their ASE credentials. And so they go to this, those types of training. And so Subaru will also do some training with our faculty members to get them up to speed to teach this material.
Sue, do our surrounding community colleges also have automotive programs or is that like limited by the state to, you know, I know they limit some things, every college can't offer every course.
Right. It's not, I don't, to my knowledge, it's not limited by the state, but SWIC used to have Autobody. So we had auto technicians and they had Autobody. They gave up their Autobody because it's an expensive program. And so I'm trying to think, there's not many because we get kids even from far south of here to come up to our program. So there's not a lot of auto tech. Probably Rankin is our number one competitor, which is a lot more expensive. They have this kind of deal with Honda, which attracts a lot of, you know, a lot of students their way. So we're working, we're working on that, but we're, you know, taking out as many as we can and getting as much attention as we can to the program. Any other questions?
Sue, you say that Ford's been good to work with. Is that through Roberts?
Yep, it's through Roberts Ford. And they, yeah, they are fantastic. We just had a car donation from them. We get software access, we get tools, examples, software. They've been fantastic partners. So this is just one more partnership.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Thank you.
Action items. Z, approval of grant or sponsored contract opportunities. A motion to approve? Motion's been made, is seconded by Bob. Any discussion? Any information we need? I got, yeah, I do have one, a couple of questions, but first one is, you know, on identifier 1.14.20-4, and this is a kind of an odd question, I guess, and I'm not sure who, if anybody here is going to be able to answer it, but what would happen if we just said, no, we're not interested in doing that anymore?
Dick Warner is here. And that, Dick, that is the proactive strategy for living with wildlife in Illinois through the IDNR grant. It's a continuation.
Oh, the main man's here, all right.
As always, it's good to visit with you. Good evening. Yeah, that's an interesting project and it is a partnership of University of Illinois Extension, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, and NGREC. And that matching, which might be what you're referring to, is a little bit of progress in that the Fish and Wildlife Service requires that they're reimbursing the state for that, that 25% of the costs of that project be shown somewhere. And in this particular case, that cost relates to some of my time that's aligned with it, some of Justin Schu's time that is aligned to it, then also another grant that's in there coming from the IDNR that's for $58,000. And most of that is also in that matching line. So just like I think the last time I explained the grant, it's sort of a collection of things that represent the match. In that case, it's a complex match. That doesn't really answer your question. In that case, if we said no, there would be some ramifications in that that's sort of the flagship project that is developing education materials that go through a lot of our projects. The land conservation program, web-based things or whatever, it is sort of the mothership of that. So it would definitely affect our ability to create and develop and disseminate that kind of information. I don't really honestly know the answer to your question. What if we just said, no, we're not going to do it? I mean, it would, we'd have to figure out our own implications internally because it does relate to a lot of other things. I don't know what the Fish and Wildlife Service and Extension would actually do with it.
Okay. Well, it says that the purpose of this grant is to websites for technical guidance related to wildlife.
Mm-hmm.
So are we responsible for the website and is that just access by the public or is it just for technical people?
It's accessed by the public and the full cost of that website, those websites are actually not on the Lewis and Clark server, they're in an Amazon server. And the full cost of developing and maintaining that is from the money that's coming to us, if that makes sense to you.
So if we didn't fund it, that website would just go away?
It'd go away.
Yeah.
Correct. Or if, correctly, I think, if that grant did not come to us, the websites would go away. And just as a matter of reference, in the sort of technical assistance around wildlife, there are huge numbers, economic numbers, not only around the positive side, but negative side. Think of deer, collision vehicle, on and on it goes. And this intends to minimize some of those costs. And the Living with Wildlife site, which again is a partnership of the Extension, when it used to be on the Extension server was one of the most heavily trafficked websites they have. And it's still a very robustly accessed website by Illinois citizens.
So is there, is there more to the website than just Living with Wildlife, for example?
Yes.
In your example, deer, living with deer, I mean, that's a, that's a big deal.
Yep, that's another one. Living with, you know, Illinois deer is another one, yeah.
Maybe living with bears one of these days.
Well, you know, there are a number of proactive things in one of those websites that addresses those weird things that come up once in a while. But from our standpoint, it's great exposure to Illinois citizens that are asking a lot of questions and it creates the resources and momentum for us to continue to develop education materials that go to landholder projects and all these other kinds of things.
Maybe this will, maybe this will help the people up in Chicago live with coyotes.
So, well, you know, interesting you mention that and there've been two incidents, but one of them was this fall where, I don't know if you saw the YouTube, the coyote was attacked. Didn't actually get bitten, but it attacked. But when CNN began to look at that and create an article, they actually created a link to this website and what it says about how you do in those situations. So it is a very heavily trafficked website and certainly those funding partners believe that this is, they have for 13 years now that these kinds of materials are an efficient way to get to Illinois citizens. So, you know, I would love, since you're showing this much, you know, interest sometime, to just give you a little bit more of a teaser on some of those things and what you can do on it. I won't take any more time unless you want me to. Thanks.
Next action item, AA, establish a pol-
There you go.
Okay, let's vote.
Tolgetzky?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Han Felder?
Yes.
Now, establish a policy for public donations. A motion to approve that?
So move a second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? I've talked with Lori and Brett about that, that they would like to have a policy on public donation and Dennis will start it off with legal opinion.
Correct. We were asked a couple of months ago to provide an opinion on whether it was appropriate for the college to make certain educational expenditures to charitable organizations in the community. I won't get in necessarily to the entire opinion. I shared it with the president's office. I don't know if that's been disseminated yet to Board of Trustee members or not. If it's not, we can certainly disseminate that. But I don't want to, you know, breach the attorney-client privilege in the opinions that were offered in that. But a lot of it comes down to having a policy to justify certain expenditures as being educationally related or some benefit to the college. My understanding is that maybe money is appropriated each year in the budget to fund some of these contributions without any policy necessarily supporting the reasons why such contributions are being made. So it was part of our suggestion that if the college is going to continue making some of these contributions, that it do so either by publicly recognizing the educational benefit for some of these contributions at the time they're approved by the board or have a policy that allows for such contributions to be made. So we do not necessarily have a policy to present yet, but would, I guess- a policy to present yet, but would, I guess, prepare a policy for discussion by the board, but we'd also want to get feedback from the board as to the types of contributions that the board would continue to like to make within the community that has an educational benefit to the college. It could even be contributions where we get advertising benefit from being president, president certain functions, or advertising benefit from making those types of contributions.
Dennis, I don't think we were privy to that opinion, and I think it'd be a good idea that we review that opinion before we make a policy or vote to have a policy.
I agree. It was, it's something we can disseminate to the board. It was disseminated at a, a time a couple of months ago to Dr. Chapman that probably didn't allow it to get disseminated to the rest of the board.
So, back to my question. Shouldn't we, shouldn't we review that before we decide if we have a policy or not?
Certainly. We're not approving a policy tonight, so we're just going forward with, I guess, a decision. Do we want to have a policy or not? So, we could certainly table any sort of decision on that until you have a chance to read the memo. And my apologies, I thought it had been disseminated to the board.
Yeah, I'd like to table that if we could.
Have a second? Motion's been made and seconded to table the establishment of a policy for public donation. Any discussion on that? Call for the vote?
The, the only thing I would like to say in the meantime, until some direction is given to the board or you adopt a policy, that you may want to halt any of these contributions until you have some direction to administration as to what funds, what public funds should be expended on some of these activities.
I think there, in my mind at least, there's some confusion between the action item, which says establish a policy, and then the recommendation authorizing the board chair and the attorney to construct a policy. So, I think maybe the, the action item should, is really not stated right. We're not gonna, I don't think we want to vote to establish a policy right now because we don't know what it is, just like Dwight said, but I think so the motion, maybe we just need to have a motion to authorize this policy to be drafted, not approved, but just drafted for our approval, right? I mean, that's the way I feel about it.
I think that was the intent coming into tonight's meeting. I understand Mr. Wertz is concerned that, how do you know if you even want a policy if you haven't seen the opinion letter? Is that right?
And how are you going to do that until you work together to construct a policy draft?
I, I see your point, but...
I'd like to see the pin at first, and then we'd decide if we need a policy.
I mean, what do we have to do to not make any donations in the next five weeks? Can we do that? Can we stop that, or?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't been, I think there's some confusion, at least on our part as well, because there are, there's a line item in our budget. I want to say it's, it's less than $10,000 for sponsorship of events. You know, then there's the other category in terms of membership dues, and so we've been holding off, for instance, there's an event next week that the board would usually be present at on our campus, and so we have not been moving forward, just waiting for some direction from the board on whether or not sponsored events would fall within that policy realm.
Would it be appropriate for Lori and Brett and Dennis and I to work on that and then establish something if you need something right away, but report back to the board next month after you've had a chance to read everything? What do you think, Dwight?
I'm fine with that, but she needs an answer for event for next week, correct?
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, we're talking about the Growth Association, the Riverbend Growth Association. They have an annual dinner. It's hosted on our campus. In the past, and when we've budgeted for a table, we just haven't gone forward with any purchase, waiting for some direction, so.
Is that the only event that you could think of in the next five, six weeks, four or five weeks?
It's the only one on my radar. It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mean, if there's, if there's some sort of temporary mechanism we could discuss, if, if something were to come forward before, between now and February, you know, we had been treating those things, I think, previously within board policy, so obviously anything that was under $5,000 was up to the president for some sort of consideration. But just kind of hearing the discussions taking place at this level, we've just kind of halted anything at this point, so.
Can we go ahead and just do that one event, and while we work on this thing?
It's up to the board.
I'm fine with that.
Brenda? Bob? Lori? Chuck? Kevin?
I guess so, yeah.
Okay. So, then, so what we need to do? Just table this for right now?
We, we can table this for right now. If this is already kind of in past practice, been a budgeted sort of thing, I think you can give direction to administration to go forward with the upcoming event, and then we can look at the, the other issues in relation to the policy.
Okay.
I, I think that, that when things are proposed, it's RBGA thing being, being example, we need to get an understanding of, okay, how does this benefit the, the college? And I'm sure it does. I'm sure there's reasons, but you know, what we like, we just need to hear them.
And just to that point, too, I, I, you know, not to say we can attend every event on campus, but it's one of the biggest events that we host on campus, so I would say there, it's a huge revenue stream just from our catering services that we'll be providing that night. In addition to, it's the, you know, those of you unfamiliar with that group, it's our economic development. It's our chamber group in the community. In complete transparency, I serve on that board, and others in this room have served on that board before, or even committees. And so, you know, that, we're, it's a, it's kind of a, a community event that obviously also, to Dennis's point earlier, has some potential marketing or advertising value to us as well, given that it is on our campus, so.
Let me throw this out. When it comes to like, to the foundation, they basically have two activities that they do. They raise friends, and they raise funds. And it almost sounds to me like the RBGA thing is raising friends, which could eventually result in raising funds. So, maybe we could, should go to the foundation and say, "Hey, will you, will you sponsor this table"? I don't know what the cost is. What is the cost we're talking about?
I, I think a table is $600 or $800. And I would just say our, you know, I don't want to speak for our foundation. There would be some events I'm sure that they would find value in, in doing, but just like, just like we're trying to do here, they have to make sure it fits within their mission in terms of, you know, they're, they're raising donor funds, and, you know, want to make sure that, that that meets with their donors as well. I would just say, you know, the, and Dwight, you're on the Growth Association board as well, so, you know, the mission of the Growth Association is to serve the economic development needs of this community. These are businesses, business owners. You know, listening to Debbie speak tonight, it's, it is a networking opportunity for us. It's, it's great for some of our career programs to network with some of those business owners. That's been at least the, the value that I've, I've seen in it over the past years, so.
We, tonight I'm sitting there, and I knew this was going to come up on the agenda, we, you had Roberts Ford, who, John Roberts was just the past chairman, donate you a car, and you said that they're very helpful with your services here, and you let you use your software. Altona Memorial Hospital donated foundation money, built a $22 million nursing facility out here, and I go on and on. These relationships are built at events like this that I don't know how you could put a, a hard dollar value on it, but it, it comes back. And this is a, it's all the business community leaders that you are soliciting to support the college.
I mean, I, I think this is a good idea. The problem is, and maybe it's from a legal standpoint, the problem would be using taxpayer money to fund it rather than donated money, donated money coming from the foundation. So, if it's donated money from the foundation being used, we don't have any, any concern about that because, first of all, we don't, it's not under our bailiwick of responsibility, not, not directly anyway, and it's not taxpayer money, so.
My suggestion would be to disseminate the memo that we had prepared. We address all of this in the opinion letter that you're having a discussion over, so that may help you in the future understand what we're talking about here.
I agree.
Okay, call for the motion to establish a policy. Call for the vote.
Okay, so.
We are going to establish a policy. Yeah, that's what you talked, you talked about. You want to read whatever you want to read, and then we'll come back and establish.
I'd like to read if we even need a policy. I have not seen the opinion. That's why I want to read, I want to read the opinion to see if we need a policy.
Okay. I think, I think what we decided to do was kind of to ta- table the item for now, but move forward with the event next, coming up in the next week or so, so that you can have an opportunity to review our opinion letter and then decide if we want to develop a policy.
Correct. So, you're saying just table?
I just, that's what the motion was. That's what the motion was.
Yes, we had a motion to table.
Okay, let's vote on, let's vote on that motion to table.
Tolketsky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain? Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Next, appoint a board member to serve as representative of Lewis and Clark College to the Illinois Community College Trustee Association. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Kevin Rust to this position.
Is there a second? Second to motion? Is there any discussion? If no discussion, call for the vote.
Tolketsky?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson? McCain? Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Rust?
I abstain. Fiscal year 2021 budget preparation. We need to authorize someone to work on that according to the notes I have. Is there a motion to, I guess, appoint Lori and Brett? That'd be the people that are supposed to do it, be doing that, correct, Lori? Okay. Let's have a motion to appoint Lori and Brett to prepare the 2021 budget.
So moved. Second.
Dwight, was that second from you? Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Tolketsky?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson? McCain?
Yes.
Resolution 20 day seven, providing for the issue of approximately $31,590,000 of general obligation refunding bonds. Is there a motion? Motion to approve? Was that, who made the motion? Bob made the motion, and you second it? Chuck?
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Discussion?
I just wanted to add that Tom Crabtree from Steeple Nicholas is here as well as Mark from, from Spear Financial. If there's any questions, there was a revised resolution placed in front of you with the updated numbers from the bond sale this morning.
Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Tolketsky?
Yes.
Watson? Hanfelder?
Yes.
McCain?
Wertz? Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adjourn to a closed section, session?
Motion.
Motion's been made. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Tolketsky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson? McCain? Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
We will now ask the members of the public who are attending the meeting to excuse the board as they leave the room to enter into a closed session. There will be no formal action following the closed session except to adjourn the meeting. The minutes will show that the open session was adjourned at 6:29.